Dan, is the surface of the levee controlled by the core? I mean, could you put down better than that sand kind of surface?
I told my wife it could be.
Wheelchairs or even Segway guys?
I think you could pay them.
I don't see why you couldn't. I mean, I've been argued with this for some reason, but...
Whatever we got the money for.
We'll go ahead and call the May 17, 2011 meeting of this line of planning commission to order. First item is approval of the summary minutes of the 2003.
Actually, that's going to be your second item.
Out of order there. Okay, item number one, referral items. Review conditions of approval applicable to conditional use permit number C-09-1 filed by Gerald Squires doing business with BFR Metals requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an auto salvage yard in an I-2 light industrial district approved on May 5, 2009. The subject property is located on north of State Street and west of Cherry Street in blocks four and five of the Elm Grove addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and is addressed as 1500 West State Street. Return to the planning commission by the city commission to articulate the specific factual basis and findings upon which their March 15, 2000 action clarifying the restrictions of BFR Metals' use of the Cherry Street gate were based. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The short answer would be that this is all the planning staff's fault because we asked you to conduct a hearing on March 15 of this spring and to clarify for us what you thought that you were approving in the nature of a conditional use permit in 2009 as it relates to this property out on West State Street. And after reviewing all the information, you made a motion to clarify or add a condition that it was your belief that use of the Cherry Street gate is, should be limited to emergency vehicles only. And that was a decision that was made by the planning commission. Your decisions are subject to appeal to the governing body. An appeal of that March 15 decision was filed. There was a hearing held in front of the city commission on May the 9. What they did was heard a presentation from Mr. Chris on behalf of BFR Metals. And the crux of that was that you having approved a conditional use permit in 2009 without any specific conditions relating to the use of the gate, that you can't come back in 2011 and modify those or clarify those or add any conditions. The city attorney's response that was that he believed that the planning commission may legally do that if the right factual circumstances are present and that you clearly recite the factual basis for your decision. His concern was that the minutes showed only a motion to add or modify that condition and didn't have specific findings or conclusions that you had made. And having been presented with that information, the city commission on the 9 voted to return this item to you to allow the planning commission to clarify the factual basis for that decision that was made. As far as the format for this referral item, our recommendation would be that you have not heard from Mr. Chris or he hasn't been allowed to present his arguments to the planning commission, that that should be done. And at the conclusion of that presentation, you would have two options. One would be to make a motion to rescind what you did on March 15 as it relates to limitations on the use of that gate. Or if you don't wish to rescind that action, then Mr. Bankston has some language there that would support a motion to recess into executive session with the city attorney to receive legal counsel and assistance on exactly what that means in terms of preparation of findings. So at this point, I would entertain any questions that commissioners have. Otherwise, I will turn it over to Mr. Chris and ask him to present his arguments on behalf of BFR Metals.
Any questions of Dean? Mr. Chris, would you approach the podium, your name and address, please, and state your case?
Terry Chris, I'm an attorney with Hampton &amp; Royce in Salina, 119 West Iron, 10th floor. I think in order to really understand this from the standpoint of how it's viewed by BFR Metals at this point in time, it's important to look at the application for conditional use permit that was before the planning commission in 2009. Staff has attached that to the agenda with item number one. It's the first item on there. And specifically, I would call your attention to the second page of that, item 14G, in which the question is that adequate access roads or entrance and exit drives will be provided and shall be so designed to prevent traffic hazards and to minimize traffic congestion in public streets and alleys. And it indicates that access drives and gates will be available on State Street and Cherry Street. That was in the original application, number CU-09-1, that this planning commission, or that the planning commission in 2009 was reviewing. During the hearing at which this application was ultimately approved, and the minutes are in here in the packet behind a tab that says excerpts of PC minutes. If we refer to the minutes from May 9, 2009, after discussion of this application, after it had been continued over a couple of prior meetings, there was a motion made that the application be approved with no screening being required along the railroad and that any new fence be eight foot tall.
Did you mean, did you mean May 5, 2009? You said May 9, 2009.
May 5, 2009, yes. In my, in my packet, at least, and I think I only have item one, but it's about the, it's, it's the fifth page from the end of the item one packet, I believe. And I'm on page two of five is the header at the top of that. And it indicates there the, the motion that was made and then that motion was passed, 6-1. There were two conditions put on the issuance of that conditional use permit at that point in time, no screening along the railroad, and that any new fence built be eight foot tall. Now, if the concern that had come up in 2011 was that the new fence that was built was only five foot tall, then I think you'd have the basis to say, we can revoke this conditional use permit. We can say you haven't observed the conditions of it. And you'd have something upon which I believe you could take lawful action. But to come back two years later and attempt to add conditions to a conditional use permit that's previously been issued and under which the owner of the property and the operator of the property have been operating for two years is something that is not within the scope of this commission's ability. The way I see the city code, the way I read the city code, I can't find anything in there that says you can go back and put additional conditions on a conditional use permit. Now, there are certain sections in the city code where it says that you can do that. One example would be section 42-68, which deals with outdoor amplified sound. That allows you to go back and review those permits from time to time to make sure that they're staying in compliance and to look at whether or not they ought to be continued. There is no, you know, there's also in section 35, which deals with, a section that deals with airspace over alleyways in the Business Improvement District, conditional, there's permits that can be issued there. And it, it states that in order to get that permit, the owner has to stay, has to sign an agreement that it's subject to revocation if they fail to comply with the conditions of the permit. There's nothing like that in section 42-366-5, which deals with conditional use permits for auto salvage yards. And it would be the contention of BFR Metals that once those conditions have been set by the planning commission, as long as the conditions that were set at the time the conditional use permit was granted, as long as those conditions are followed and no other code sections or ordinances are violated, then you don't have the authority to come back and add additional conditions to that permit. I understand that the concern here that has, that has generated this, you know, going, going beyond the whether or not you can do what you want to do, I think we need to look at what it is that you're trying to do here. The, there's a diagram up here of how things lay out. Cherry Street is a, is a public street within the city of Salina. And the people who made complaints... Why am I bringing an airliner down if I have that? The people, the people who made, who made the complaints didn't really have any concern with, with the exception of one, that maybe the gate was too close to the road and trucks swung over onto his property. I believe Mr. Young stated, as, as trucks come out of BFR's property through the gate, they swing onto his road in order to make the turn onto Cherry Street. He's the one that really expressed any concern at all about the gate itself. The complaints that were there was the nature of the traffic on Cherry Street. And in effect, what, what you've tried to do is prohibit the vehicles of BFR Metals from using Cherry Street. And I think, again, that's something that would be outside the scope of the planning commission's authority. This is a public street in the city of Salina. There's trucks that use that every day, other than trucks that belong to BFR Metals. And the planning commission hasn't done anything to restrict those people from using it. There's a truck repair shop located on that street. And so presumably, they're bringing trucks in and out, and nobody's trying to restrict their use of Cherry Street. But it's BFR Metals whose use is being restricted. But the planning commission hasn't said you can't use the street. They've said you can't use the gate. So really, you know, I think the, the, it's, it's a, a way of trying to get at a problem that the commission, that this commission perceives to exist by restricting the use of the gate unlawfully, in our view. But really, it's not the gate itself that's the problem, it's the use of the street. If the, if there's precedent for the use of the street to be restricted or limited in some way, then we ought to be looking at that rather than doing it through the use of restricting the use of a gate to only certain types of usages. The, the remainder of the, of the position that we have, I think, is, is as set forth in the appeal letter that we wrote to the, to the city commission. I don't see any need to stand up here and read that to you. You've all had it available and you've had an opportunity to study it. I think it'd be easier if I would just ask whether any of you have any questions of me.
Do you even have any questions on Mr. Chris's position on behalf of Mr. Bohm? Thank you.
Thank you.
I won't make a motion if there are other questions.
Any other questions of staff or applicant at this time?
I don't know if there's other public comment or...
This is an appeal hearing, so I don't know if this is a public comment.
I think that would be advisable to direct that question to Mr. Bankston and see whether that is appropriate to take any additional comment or just hear from Mr. Chris on the basis of the appeal.
I guess I would respond to that with a question of Mr. Chris. I didn't know if there were any persons that you had, that you were anticipating having testify today or bring any additional evidence to the picture. Not that you should have, I just didn't, didn't want to short circuit anything that you might have in mind. My suggestion was at the point that, at which you had had opportunity to do whatever you and your client wanted to do today, I would like to consult with the planning commission in executive session if that's their wish.
My, my understanding of what the city commission did is that they sent this back and asked that the specific factual basis and findings upon which their March 15, 2011 action was taken be stated. In my way of thinking, taking additional evidence today would go beyond what has been requested. I mean, they, they heard on the, on the 15th and made a decision on that day on that basis. And I think the question is whether that is a legally enforceable decision or one that the commission ought to overrule. And so to open it up for further comment, I think, would just muddy the waters.
I certainly don't disagree. I just didn't want to get ahead of whatever you might have in mind, so.
Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
I'd move that we recess into executive session for 10 minutes, Mr. Bankston?
We'll certainly try to do it in that timeframe. We'll try to keep it short so we don't have to keep anybody waiting unnecessarily.
After meeting with Mr. Bankston, do you have a few words?
To discuss, or to receive legal counsel for preparations on findings of this matter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll quickly relate as the precursor to a motion that I anticipate that you all might
Second. Moved in second to recess into executive session for 10 minutes.
wish to make.
All those in favor, say aye.
My recommendation to the planning commission was certainly given the importance of this
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
matter to the applicant, the importance of the matter, obviously, to the city commission and to this body, that in order to truly assess the factual circumstances, I have recommended that in a special setting or at least some opportunity for a public meeting, that the planning commission view all of the proceedings relevant to this matter, including the 2009 and the planning commission's most recent hearings on this matter, so that you may assess it with full information of all public information that's been available, both at the time of consideration of the original application and this most recent action.
I'd entertain a motion to, Mr. Chairman, have a special meeting?
I would make a motion, in order to evaluate, the matter is referred back to us as a commission, we need to review the tapes of the relevant meetings of 2009 and 2011 regarding this matter in order to determine factual matters related to this appeal. Further, I would ask that the staff establish such a special meeting that those tapes may be reviewed.
Sir, second?
I second.
And moved in second to address the, or have the staff call a special meeting at which, at a time that's convenient for Mr. Chris, Mr. Bohm, and Mr. Squires and the rest of the planning commission and the public to review these tapes and see on a factual basis what actually went on there in regards to this decision. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
Just as a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, what we'll do is, because of the need for audio and video, we will schedule that special meeting in room 105, which is down the hall here. It will be a public meeting and we will have, Alyssa will poll the planning commissioners to make sure we have a date upon which we can achieve a quorum. And then we will notify all interested parties of the date and time of that public viewing session.
And could you have her also poll Mr. Chris and Mr. Bohm and Mr. Squires?
Yes, they would be considered, we would consider their schedules well to make sure that they could be represented.
Thank you. Okay, item number two, approval of the summary minutes of the May 3, 2011 regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the summary minutes of the May 3, 2011 regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Application, item number three, application PDD 11-2/2A filed by Leroy Schmidt requesting a change in zoning district classification from PC-5 planned service commercial to PDD I-2 light industrial to allow a wrecker service impound yard. The subject property is legally described as Lot 2 of the White Truck Addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 100 East Pleasant Hill Road. Request for I-2 zoning recommended for denial by the planning commission, application amended to a planning, plan development commission by the applicant. Dean?
We just seem to have long application descriptions in all of our items here, but on, in, Leroy Schmidt is the owner of a property that's located at the corner of Pleasant Hill Road and North Fifth Street. He is a potential buyer, which is Palmer Truck and Trailer Repair. They're interested in purchasing Lot 2 for use as an impound yard for a towing service. The impound yard use is only permitted in industrial zoning classifications, specifically the I-2 and I-3 district. And staff informed Mr. Schmidt that the zoning of the site would have to be changed before the use could be changed to a towing service with an impound and storage yard. In March of this year, an application was filed to rezone the property to I-2. You conducted a hearing on that in April. And at the conclusion of that hearing, you voted eight to zero to recommend denial of the request for I-2 zoning. Your specific concerns expressed were the lack of utilities, the current unpaved condition in Pleasant Hill Road, the fact there was no industrial zoning in the immediate vicinity. And you were also concerned that straight I-2 zoning with all the unlimited number of uses could allow a number of intense uses that this site was not suitable for. You did appear to at least leave the door open for a possibility of considering it as a specific plan development district. So following the meeting, the applicant prospective buyer decided to amend their request to plan development district and to submit a, and prepare a plan for how that specific use might operate at this location. And I believe, John, you have that available, correct? So with the assistance of Warren Etiger, local architect, this plan for how an impound yard might be located and operate at this site was submitted. And I would point out to you that the two main differences between a planned development district and conventional zoning. And the first difference is that a planned development district allows you to place limitations on the uses. You can modify specific requirements that exist in our standard zoning districts. The other aspect of it is that you can review a specific site plan, and that is incorporated into the zoning change or any zoning change that would occur. And examples of things that a site plan could address is the number and type of buildings, surfacing of driveways and parking, adequacy of public utilities, how site drainage is addressed, any form of landscaping. This request that's before you now is a specific plan for a towing impound yard that would consist of a lighted fenced-in area with no buildings or other site improvements. So this, this plan that's been prepared shows you a primary area here that would have a fenced-in area approximately 42,000 square feet, which is just a little under an acre. It would be equipped with gates. And it would have area lighting that would be located in the northwest corner of the site on an area that was previously filled by wheat state carriers, the previous owner. They're also showing you a potential expansion area. If they were to increase the impound storage, they would do it to the south, closer to that drainage area. I wanted to specifically address screening and what has been acceptable as a method of screening. Solid wood fence is acceptable, but we find that in these larger areas, whether it's an automobile salvage yard or an impound yard or other areas, solid wood fences tend to catch wind, they tend to be fragile, they can be blown over, they can be high maintenance items. So that's not the first choice. Painted metal panels have also been used. Stacked concrete blocks have been used, specifically the BFR Metals site in attempting to achieve an eight-foot fence, use stacked concrete block where the weight of the material basically provides its own security. An evergreen hedge at least six feet in height is also acceptable. Over on Auto House, as kind of an experimental basis because of an existing chain link fence situation, we have also allowed chain link with mesh fabric as an acceptable form of screening. And one thing about the mesh fabric is that it does tend to obscure sight, obviously not as well as a solid substance, but the mesh fabric tends to work in open areas where you have a lot of wind and susceptibility to that. So if you had an opportunity to drive by Auto House, they do have a mesh fabric fence. We do not have the... Solid wood fence is acceptable, but we find that in these larger areas, whether it's an automobile salvage yard or an impound yard or other areas, solid wood fences tend to catch wind, they tend to be fragile, they can be blown over, they can be high maintenance items, so that's not the first choice. Painted metal panels have also been used. Stacked concrete blocks have been used specifically. The BFR Metals site in attempting to achieve an eight-foot fence, used stacked concrete block where the weight of the material basically provides its own security. An evergreen hedge at least six feet in height is also acceptable. Over on Auto House, as kind of an experimental basis because of an existing chain link fence situation, we have also allowed chain link with mesh fabric as an acceptable form of screening. And one thing about the mesh fabric is that it does tend to obscure sight, obviously not as well as a solid substance, but the mesh fabric tends to work in open areas where you have a lot of wind and susceptibility to that. So if you had an opportunity to drive by Auto House, they do have a mesh fabric fence. We do not have the specifications that Salina Police Department has for their potential towing contract, but we do believe that this application is driven by a desire to try to satisfy the police department's requirements for being a contract towing yard. In other words, the police department would have relations with a specific towing contractor to handle their towing work and to have a safe, secure place for impounded vehicles. The plan that you see in front of you has two entrance gates proposed, one on Pleasant Hill Road and a secondary gate on North Fifth Street. We would request that the applicant provide additional information about the need for and intended use of the east gate, where we would ask the applicant to clarify for the record what that use would be of that gate and why it's important to this plan. So again, Mr. Schmidt is the current owner, he is a potential buyer, their specific interest is in an impound yard, and they are currently operating a business across the way, Palmer Truck and Trailer Repair, which is currently located in the county. So I think you are familiar with the issues involved, and we wanted to spend a little bit of time on the utility side of things and also on the street access side of things. There are sanitary sewer and water services in Ninth Street, but they've never been extended to the east, so this property is completely unserved by city utilities. However, the plan that you have calls for no buildings, no habitable structures, nothing that would necessarily need that. However, without access to city water, if it does become a requirement for some form of fire protection, and that's something that is important to the police department for their contract, then something will need to be done to extend water for fire protection to this site. Presently, it does not have fire protection. There was no drainage study required at the time of plating. There is a large drainage area that goes through here and crosses under Fifth Street. We had that discussion at your last meeting. And then the most important aspect of this is that access to this property is proposed to be from Pleasant Hill Road and North Fifth Street. Both of these are unimproved streets. And I think, John, you had some photographs that just showed the general condition of That is Pleasant Hill Road to the right and the Kansas Truck Center in the background. So it's this grassy field that is proposed for the impound use. So it's our opinion that the current dirt and gravel streets is not adequate to provide access to a use that will introduce additional truck traffic on roads that were neither designed or built to handle heavy truck traffic. Such traffic will cause these roads to deteriorate rapidly with potholes and mud being dragged onto Ninth Street. So our primary concern about the I-2 zoning was, one, the compatibility of surrounding uses, but secondly, with the wide open list of uses available in I-2, it opened up the potential for an intensified use without any corresponding road improvements to Pleasant Hill Road. So we have a couple of alternatives identified. You could approve this request as requested, but limit the permitted uses to a towing service impound yard only with any other conditions you think is appropriate. You could approve a planned development district, but allow for additional permitted uses beyond a towing service impound yard. We don't have any to offer up for you, so that would have to come from the applicant or the owner. You could postpone consideration of this to allow the potential buyer and his architect to prepare a revised development plan if you have concerns about this one. You could postpone consideration to receive additional information, or you could recommend denial of this request and provide the reasons for that. If you're looking at this property and you're looking at a fenced-in area with no habitable buildings that doesn't need utilities, that is about the only conceivable use that this property is suitable for because although it has platted and it's been zoned C5 historically, no effort has been made by the owners to put in the necessary public improvements to support development here. And try as we might through research and everything else, we can't get into the minds of what the Planning Commissioners were thinking back in 1974 to approve a plat and zoning without a requirement to improve the streets. But we can tell you that the reason that Diamond Drive, which used to be gravel, is now paved is because at the time that the plats were approved along Diamond Drive, there was a requirement that before development was approved, that the necessary public improvements be made, and we could not find that in the record here as relates to the White Truck Addition. So that makes it a judgment call for you because you're dealing with a platted lot that's in the city limits that has a C5 zoning. So from our perspective, the only rationale for allowing an impound yard at this location as proposed is if you believe and are convinced, based on information presented from the applicant or others, you would have to reach the conclusion that there wouldn't be any more traffic using Pleasant Hill Road than is already using it today to get from Ninth Street to Palmer Trucking's operation because it is happening today. There are vehicles that are going from Ninth Street over to Palmer Trucking's location on North Fifth Street, and they're using Pleasant Hill Road to get there. I think the other thing, and I'll let Mr. Stack give you the odds, whether they're better than 50/50, that North Fifth Street will be closed and cut off. If he doesn't want to make a prediction, then we'll take that as well. But do you foresee that in the near future, that culvert's going to be removed and North Fifth will in fact just be cut off?
Well, at this point, that's the, we're looking at that very issue. KDOT's done some survey and looking at the whole channel corridor to figure out if that's a, what the costs are going to be and the options, and they're just going to give us some options and some costs, and then we'll bring that to the City Commission for a decision. It's a different City Commission now than before, so I don't know about the odds, but that will happen sometime this year.
But that is one of the options on the tables to remove that, and that would, John can show us right there where this is, but what that would essentially do is this piece here would be a dead-end road, and this would dead-end at the culvert, and so you would no longer have traffic using Fifth Street. So the way that you would get to this property is always going to be Pleasant Hill Road. And so that is one of the things that led us to ask the applicant to clarify the reason for the Fifth Street gate. But if you were convinced, and only if you were persuaded, that the impound yard would not increase traffic beyond what is already using Pleasant Hill Road to reach Palmer Trucking and Trailer Repair, then possible conditions of approval would be to limit this to the towing service impound yard as the only permitted use. That the development and use of this property conformed to the plan that's on file with the Planning Department and that you're reviewing today, that the owner agree by filing a legal covenant that would be recorded stating their agreement not to protest a future benefit district for the paving of Pleasant Hill Road. We do not have that in place today, such a covenant, and we don't know how easy it would be to put a benefit district together, but at a minimum, this property should agree to be a participant. And then, and number four, there is basically to say that there would be no change in use on this property allowed other than as an impound yard without the full review and approval of the Planning Commission and City Commission with a report from staff based on the public utility and road improvement needs created by the proposed use and the willingness of the property owner to provide or help finance public infrastructure improvements needed to support the proposed use. So that's a mouthful, but the idea is to say, all right, it's a vacant lot today, it's not able to be put to any productive use, it's okay as an interim use to have an impound yard there, but if somebody comes in and they have a plan for a proposed use, then we want to have the public utility and road improvement needs evaluated, and we want to make a decision based on the willingness of the property owner to provide the necessary public improvements needed to support the proposed use. And making that part of it attaches that to this property so that it does not get marketed in the future as a development property as it's being marketed today as if it were a development property when it has no services whatsoever. So we are dealing with a hand that was dealt to us by a decision made in 1974 to annex, to plat, and to zone this property, and since 1974 to the present, no owner has made any investment in the property to make it suitable for development. So really what it boils down to you today is to say, no, no steps have been made to make this property suitable for development, or yes, for the limited purpose of an impound yard as an interim use that would allow the property to be put to some productive use with limitations on it changing into something else and with an agreement from the owner that they would contribute to the future paving of Pleasant Hill Road if that becomes a project. But that's the best that we could do or come up with to allow that even as some kind of interim use. And with that, I'd be open to any questions that you have.
Any questions of staff?
I have one. Dean, tell me again, I think you've said this, but I frankly can't remember. What's the city's adopted comprehensive plan designate for this area as far as zoning?
As far as the future map, and I don't know if you can get access to that through the T-drive, John, but we have a future land use map. The future land use map shows it as a transition area with commercial along Ninth Street transitioning to employment. And employment is a pseudonym for industrial. It includes industrial, but it also includes other types of uses that you would see out by the airport industrial area. But it shows, and that would be it right there, John.
Yeah, those maps are terrible.
Okay, so this is the area here, and so the red, this represents commercial development along Ninth Street with transitioning back to the employment use, and you see that on both sides. And so the, over here, you have commercial property that's Petro II and Baird's and the truck wash. In behind that, the zoning of that is I-2, more for warehousing and warehouses, things of that nature, but this pink color represents commercial development, and these lines don't necessarily correspond with actual property lines, but it's showing commercial along the Ninth Street frontage and then transitioning back to employment uses behind that, but not all employment uses are equal. So again, that's a judgment call for what you think is a compatible or suitable use.
On recommendation number three, that they would not protest formation of a special assessment benefit district. So going back to that drawing of the site or the site plan, yeah, no, the big one that shows the other, yeah. What else would trigger that need if this property?
Something that happened on the north side.
Okay.
Because, I mean, they would be included because they benefit and have frontage. Of course, Kansas Truck Center's going to say, we have no driveways on Pleasant Hill Road, we're quite happy with this access that we have here. What interest is of ours whether Pleasant Hill Road gets paved or not? So they would be a participant, but the benefit district would probably be here, here, and what's on the north side. And so in order to create a benefit district, you have to get at least 51% of the owners or ownership to agree to participate. So we have used the covenant agreeing not to protest as a tool to say, we may not be ready now, but down the road as a benefit district is formed, we want you on the record as being in support of that. And so that allows that to move forward without protest. But that would be the purpose of that, and right now, only Lot 2 is under your review. But we, if we cannot, which it does not appear that we can find, I mean, you could make a requirement as a condition to say that you won't approve this unless Pleasant Hill Road is paved from Ninth Street to this driveway. You could make that as a condition. I would imagine that the impound yard will never happen under that condition, but that is within your authority to say, we will not support this unless Pleasant Hill Road is paved to provide access. That's within your authority to do.
If that were a, if that were rezoned I-2, it could be rezoned I-2 without paving Pleasant Hill Road, though. Is that correct or not?
If you were to vote that way, you would lose your leverage or lever for ensuring that it get paved. What we're, we're just trying to, and I'm not saying this is the right thing to do, we're saying, okay, here's a way to carve out a limited exception to allow an impound yard and nothing else without asking that question. But you certainly have the authority today to say, we're fine with an impound yard provided the road is paved. And if they're not, if you think that's important and they're not willing to pave it, then it fails on that regard. But these were the only conditions that we could come up with that we thought safeguarded and didn't open the door like I-2 would for future development without paving.
Did that answer your question, Ken?
Yes.
Any further questions of staff? Well, we'd like to hear from Mr. Schmidt or his spokesperson or Mr. Etiger.
Good afternoon. My name is Warren Etiger. My business address is 631 East Crawford, Suite 211. I prepared the site plan drawing that you had on the screen and probably have in front of you. The main portion of the impound lot that's shown fenced and would be the initial construction is on this portion- is on the portion of the site that was built up for the project that was previously proposed there. The expansion portion, which would go to the south, includes area that has also been built up, not completely to that configuration, but nearly so. And at the time that they would expand to that, they would either conform the fence to the area that's built up or expand the built-up area to elevate it to what is needed. Dean had raised the question about the drive to the east. In talking with Mr. Palmer, the primary entrance is the one on the north, Pleasant Hill. The drive to the east, he saw as primarily an emergency access, and also, there might be times when a truck would need to pull through rather than be able to turn around inside the lot. And so, it would occasionally be used for a pull-through, but he saw the primary use being to go back out the main entrance to it.
I'm not sure which it is.
I believe in the previous hearing on this, Mr. Palmer addressed the traffic issue by saying that he did not believe that the traffic to the impound lot would exceed what is currently going down that road to his facility.
Mr. Palmer is not here today, is he?
He is not here today.
Well, I think that's one issue, but if we approve this, we're automatically approving an expansion opportunity as well.
What I suggested both to Mr. Palmer and in giving guidance to Mr. Ettinger in developing a plan, that if, what, even in planned development districts, what you try to avoid is the requirement to come back each and every time that there's a change or an expansion or something. So, that often has been done by the planning commission is if the applicant shows a Phase 1 and a Phase 2 plan, and everybody clearly understands what Phase 2 is, and it's shown at a public hearing, that your action approving this would allow them, without further public hearings or action, to expand into Phase 2, as long as it was consistent with this plan. So, anybody who's interested in this project would know today, based on this plan, that Phase 1 is the north piece and Phase 2 is the south piece, and from, you can certainly clarify or deviate from that, but what our expectation was that if the Phase 2 was consistent with what they were showing today, then they could move to that in the future. If you think that's too much for the site, then you should say so today, and that the only portion of the plan you're approving is for Phase 1.
I guess my concern is that I assume that if the Phase 2 is needed, that just means more traffic coming down Pleasant Hill Road, which I'm assuming is more traffic than what's coming down Pleasant Hill Road now.
I would agree with that assumption. I think then that triggers the issue of a traffic study and the need for paving and then the whole rest of the covenant and the things that you were asked to address.
If that is the perception of the commission, then it would be important to articulate that and say that if you were favorable to it, that you're only favorable to Phase 1.
Yeah.
And to make that clear. But what I indicated to them and to Mr. Ettinger was that if you were thinking about an expansion or the ability to expand in the future, you need to share that with the planning commission upfront. So, this was shown this way at our encouragement to indicate to you that there might be an interest in future expansion.
And the only way that I think I can get to the usage of Pleasant Hill Road that's happening now and will happen once this facility is in use is how many cars are being impounded now, and how many, what is the room for cars being impounded proposed? So, if what I'm hearing is there won't be any additional traffic than what's happening now, then that says to me that we're only going to be putting as many cars in this new facility as already are in the old facility.
I follow the logic. I don't know that I have the ability to answer the question. I don't know enough about his business to be able to say that.
I think Mr. Palmer's position was, and I'm going to ask for clarification on this if somebody thinks differently, but I think his position was is that, right now, they are going out and picking up cars, and they are taking to another impound yard and then coming back. So, they're making the same amount of trips on that road, and that their thinking was is that instead of taking to somebody else's impound yard, they'd be going out and then bringing them back to their own impound yard. So, they'd have the same number of trips, but they'd just be stored there.
The difference would be they'd be driving into this lot on the return trip with the vehicle instead of dropping it off someplace.
But if they were to get the city contract, then that, I would assume, would mean a lot more trips.
Potentially. That means they're successful with their business.
Dean, I had a question and a thought on this. Is there a way of tying this to a time period? In other words, saying like, in two years, we want to reevaluate this, the road situation? Or is that something you do on a regular basis?
No, that is something that's within your authority on this, or in a conditional use permit setting, that you may put a time limit on it, subject to review. That's very commonplace on sand pits and gravel pits, that there's a specific time limit on that, and then after five years, it's reviewed. We had downtown drinking establishments that were permitted, subject to a 12-month review. So, that would be permissible. I think the other thing that I'm hearing, that I feel for Mr. Ettinger being in his position, because it's really something that Mr. Palmer is the only one that could answer, but it would be relevant perhaps to know, if he has an impound yard in the county, what the current capacity of that is and what his anticipated capacity is of Phase 1 here, that would probably help support the idea that the traffic impact is neutral.
And the other issue for me is the east gate, because as we know from past experience, that it's, I can see how it would be attractive to just go in one and then out the other, which puts a lot more pressure on Fifth Street than is there now, and...
That's the increased traffic.
Yeah, and that's a concern.
Because right now, the traffic pattern is here and up.
And then, right, right.
Now, we're going to move it.
Right, so now, we're not only putting pressure on Pleasant Hill Road that's not improved for increased and can't withstand increased traffic, we're also doing the same thing at Fifth Street and all those that live along there. So, that would be my concern about a gate there, because I just think it's going to be very attractive to pull through, rather than to bring something in, back up. I mean, we have a current situation that we're looking at now, that that's proven to be the case.
From a practical standpoint, it always seems somewhat difficult to me of enforcement of use of roads once zoning is approved. I believe that to be the case. In other words, enforcement and saying, you maybe were not going to use it more, but now you are, is pretty hard to do. I'd like to look at the bigger picture here and talk about the future of this whole area. First of all, Warren, what will this do to enhance our community? If we were to change this to a planned development area or an I-2 either one, how does this enhance the city of Salina? How does this enhance the area north of I-70? And then, that could lead to what might happen across the road, which is currently agriculture. Does that need to be I-2 in the future to really enhance our city? Or is this just merely a backdoor way to get an impound yard into an area that we were once told I-2 we're not going to approve? I'm just asking that question. Is there a shortage of impound yards in this community? And if there's a shortage, then we have to meet that need. But if there's not, what need are we meeting here?
Well, I would, I'd have to say there's a shortage, otherwise, this individual wouldn't be in favor of spending the money to create one. I don't know what the condition is of the one in the county. Obviously, there's some, you don't have the jurisdiction over that or the ability to control what it looks like or how they access it or the roads to it. This one does put it within your control, and so, if you look at that area and the development that's occurred there and what you think is going to happen over the next 20 years, this is at least some activity moving in that direction. I would anticipate, though, that as, if, whether it's a commercial activity or an industrial activity continues to develop in that, you'll see these kinds of uses being treated as a transitional use where it gets replaced by something that has higher value. I mean, land development follows what the value of land is, and so, if you have adjacent property that's being developed at a higher level, this will get replaced. I think in large part, this is convenience for Palmer Trucking. It's on their way in and out. It's easier for them to control. The other part of it is, it gives you an opportunity to control what it looks like also.
Warren, can you give us some kind of idea of how many cars we're talking that that lot could hold?
I did a real quick calculation, and allowing for some drives and aisles through there, it's probably no more than 80. And from what he described, as far as how that transition occurs in there, it's usually quite a bit less than that. That would be every available space being filled.
And that would be the Phase 1 area?
Phase 1 only, yeah. And in talking with him about the Phase 2, I mean, that's, I think in his mind, that's a long ways away. I don't, that was, because we were asked to project, if we were going to expand it, where would we put it? That's where it would go. That also, again, is a part of the area that was built up or elevated as part of the previously proposed development. The other thing about that driveway to the east is that that was already elevated also. I was looking in your packet and didn't see the drawing that was part of the previous drawing for that, PDD, but it showed a drive going out that direction also, and that's...
I wondered, is there any other difference in this drawing from our previous one?
As far as where development occurs and so on, no. This is following that. Again, it's trying to take advantage of the site elevation that had already taken place. And that determined the boundary of the fence also.
Yeah, the primary difference, and I don't, John may not still have that drawing, but the, and it was rather a strange thing, but they had a drive that did this, it actually looped back on itself, but it came out of here and looped back up just the other side of this culvert. So, there was an area here that was a truck terminal plan, they had a drive coming out here, but it actually went like that and connected back. So, this here in this location is close to what was on the Wheat State Carrier's plan, except they ran it up here, and so, they had a thing that looked like that as opposed to connecting out to Fifth Street. This is a configuration here where the road is here, and I don't know if, I think if you go out there, there's almost like a pathway here for this turn, but this is actually all right-of-way here, and this is the shape of the edge of the lot. So, it's a curved lot, and this is all public right-of-way, I believe, for a curve like that because of the angle Fifth Street runs. This is a difficult turn, so there was a, historically, a road that went like that.
If the drive to the east is the primary hang-up with approving this, I would suggest maybe that you ask Mr. Palmer to consider a second exit or driveway to Pleasant Hill in lieu of the one going to the east. I'm not sure how important it is to him to have the second exit. Again, it was taking advantage of what had already been, at least partially, built up for a drive there. If it went back out to Pleasant Hill, it would allow him to pull through a truck when that was convenient because of the arrangement of cars in the impound lot, but it wouldn't introduce any traffic onto...
Fifth Street.
Fifth Street.
But even if he didn't have another access onto Pleasant Hill, if they just pulled through and went back out the same exit, there's no difference in turns that a truck has to make.
Except that you have to have the ability to make a complete turnaround inside the impound lot. That takes up more space. If they just simply drive in, make a U through it, and come back out, they can have a pathway that's clear, park on either side of that, and not dedicate as much open ground to it then. Gives them a little more flexibility in how they arrange the cars.
Any further questions of Mr. Ettinger? Thank you.
Thanks.
As this is a public hearing, we'll take comments from the public at this time. Anyone care to address the commission?
Yeah.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Jo Malin, and I live at 2404 North Fifth. I think from the last meeting that we were at, the original plan was just to make this one area where they were going to be and one driveway only, not two. And if there's not going to be very many cars in there, as they supposedly said, then they would still have God's plenty of room to turn around in there, you know, with their wrecker, flatbed, whichever they have, you know, semi-whatever, and they could still turn around in there if they didn't have that many cars. Eventually, they will take that bridge out, like they said in 2013, is what K Dot told me. So, there will be access, as you said, running on Fifth Street if they make this other access here to the east. Right down the road from there is a farmhouse, and they already, they didn't come today, but they're already complaining because of all the dirt and all the running up and down. And then supposedly, Mr. Palmer said that to the north of him is Dirt Works. I had a semi come by the house almost every day, and I have a 10-ton weight limit on the bridge, and they still run over the bridge. When they knew that they were going to come to the planning commission about this, and it's nothing against, you know, his business or his people, they continuously run over the bridge and run past my house, you know, with the 10-ton weight limit. When they found out that we were coming back, they stopped running over the bridge. As soon as they find out that if you, you know, you boat, you know, whatever you're going to do, but as soon as they, you guys denied it, they were back running over the bridge again. So, this is all, you know, right here where they want to do it, but in the future, they will have this extended part. If you would decide to let them have it all now, then they will keep going, 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 you know, further to the south, and then that's going to where the brand-new creek's going to be, and then all the radiator fluids, all that kind of stuff's going to run right back down into the creek, and then it'll run back down into the mulberry and back into the river. So, I think it's a bad idea to have it there, and it's not going to improve anything, it's just going to make it look worse down there than it already does. And, you know, even if it has a fence, if he would consider, you know, with respect of where he's at and the people that live around him, doing something to his place, I don't think so many people have so much, you know, concern as what I've been told from the neighbors and stuff. Because at one time, he did have an impound lot at his place. It was just right north of his brick building there that he used for an office. And now, there's so much stuff and all that kind of stuff around and trailers that he hasn't done anything with for a long time, there's nowhere to put anything there. But at one time, he did, because my husband worked for him, so I kind of, sort of know what I'm talking about. But there's just no room for anything anymore, because, I mean, he has it all over his place there, he has it across the road, and this here is just going to get bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. And like I said, all that stuff's going to run right back into the creek and then down to the river and the water, and there's an actual field to, right now, it's a bean field right to the east of that entrance there that he wants to put in, if possible, to make sure he turns around. They might want to, in time when that is to be sold, because that is the, and Hedges Estate, and in time, if they want it to be sold, they might want to do something with that ground besides just be a bean field. So, right there is their driveway, and then right up there is where they want to turn around and go clear back up to Pleasant Hill. And like you stated, Sidney, they will make extra ruts and extra everything on Fifth Street from that exit that they want to put in back to Pleasant Hill, because Pleasant Hill right now is nothing but worship board, especially since it has a rain, it's even worse. And then, when it does rain, there's potholes and all that, and with the concrete trucks and the Dirt Works trucks, or whatever they're called up there, starting up there, and with Roy's Wreckers running 24/7, when they do their rotation up and down, up and Roy's wreckers running 24/7, when they do their rotation up and down, up and down, up and down, there's a great big drop-off on Ninth Street down to Pleasant Hill that where they've run up and down that road and basically ruined the road. And it'll continue unless they do something with it. And Fifth Street's just as bad. It'll be just as bad if they continue to run up and down the road with the wreckers and everything until they actually, you know, get it closed. Because like I said, there's a 10-ton weight limit sign on it, but nobody listens.
Refresh my memory, you live north or south of the creek?
I live, well, actually, we live a little bit south of the creek, and the creek runs into our property.
So when they close that, you won't be affected by any of that traffic?
Nope. Just until if you approve it, then we will, because, you know, he said it was approved for what, 80 cars could hold it? Well, I've seen in the Slinea wrecker where they sent for, you know, set forever, and they would have so many in that back area and in that little area that they have, that they would have car auctions to get rid of their cars. They've set so long and nobody came to get them. Because sometimes that's what they do. If they have them on the highway broke down and nobody wants them, or they think, oh, well, they're not worth nothing, they leave them in that, in the impound lot. Nobody comes to get them. They tag them, they haul them off, they leave them there. And sometimes the people, they don't have titles to them, you know, whatever, and there you be. Then you have to have an auction to get rid of all of them, and they set forever. So my thing is no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dean, this, this couldn't be used for additional storage, for that business, trailers, whatever?
No. We put in your packet our definition of an impound yard, and that's, that's what we would expect. And if that's what, and again, we're, we're, the, the, the goal of, of staff here was to try to take this proposal and squeeze it down into the most acceptable, possible acceptable form. It doesn't mean you're obligated to approve it or think that it's a, a good idea, but what we tried to do was, was take the proposal and try to address through conditions the concerns that had been raised. And so the limitation would be an impound yard only, so it's not a construction or contractor storage yard. It's not anything else but impounding cars, and it's not a salvage yard either. There's a difference between a salvage yard and an impound yard. And a impound yard, that means you have vehicles that are capable of running, they're tagged, they have identifiable owners for the most part. The only exception would be an abandoned vehicle on the interstate or something with an unclear title. But for the most part, impound yards are to house vehicles that are towed away by the police department or are confiscated as part of an arrest or are involved in a traffic accident, and vehicles go there pending going to the insurance adjuster. So what we tried to do was, was say that towing service impound yard would be the only use. It would have to be done in accordance with whatever plan that you found acceptable and approved. And if you want to knock out the gate on Fifth Street and knock out Phase Two and all those things, those are appropriate conditions. But we, we tried to box it in to make it, to how it could be presented in the most acceptable form, and that doesn't mean that that's the perfect use for this property. It just means that we try to focus on the land use and try to take away the other peripheral issues. But for staff, it is only defensible if the belief is that the traffic that will be coming to this impound yard is already using Pleasant Hill Road today to get to Palmer Trucking and Repair or other businesses.
Dean, clarify for me, and because this is important for me as I try to make the decision how I'm going to vote, is how this planned benefit district could work? And let me, let me ask my question more specifically. It would appear that if we approved what might be a possibility number three, where they would not protest a planned benefit district, then about 25% of that would already be non-protestable. If a person acquired a piece of property across the road and we required the same thing of them, and that would be another 25%. Is that correct?
Well, I think across the street would probably be, John, if you could go to the plat map.
Well, I just, I just need to know how far we can go. When can the road ever be paved? That's the question. And then can the city-
This is 25, this is 25, and the other 50 is over here.
But if that's split into two lots above, yes, and one of them were 26% of that above, then the city, and that person would not protest by the same kind of deed attachment, then the city could impose paving requirements on that road at that time? Is that correct?
The difference is that the north side is currently zoned agricultural-
I understand.
And it's not platted. And if somebody came in and said, "We want to develop something on the north side of Pleasant Hill Road," you would simply require that as part of that plating, the road be paved. And they say, "Well, we'd like to do it by a benefit district if we could." They've got 50%, and the 25% is already in place, so that puts you at 75%. And that is going to get you a road. The only people that would object to that is that, I will, I will just give you an illustration. And when the Tasker Edition, which is behind Target, was platted, there was a covenant put on the Tasker Edition that said if a benefit, because at the time the Tasker Edition was done, Schilling Road was a gravel road. You may not remember that far back, but Schilling was a gravel road. Said, "You must file a covenant that if and when a benefit district for Schilling Road is created, that lots in the Tasker Edition will participate and not protest that." So it was about four years into that subdivision, there was a benefit district created for Schilling Road, and Berg Camp Company was part of that, and the owners on the south side was part of that. And the Tasker Edition was already put in place, so they couldn't protest that. And so every lot that's in the Tasker Edition paid for the paving of Schilling Road, but that was done and put in place to make sure that you didn't have later owners in the Tasker Edition saying, "Wait a minute, we don't want to be part of that benefit district." But to, to do the math and to get over the 50% protest level, this only gets you to 25%, but if you didn't have it, you could potentially have 50% here and 50% here and be able to block it. And so the, the purpose of this is if you had the north side in this, there's no way that that could be blocked. And I'm, I'm not saying that that's, that's a cure-all, but it, it simply puts something on the record so you don't have somebody coming along later that buys this property and says, "Well, I didn't know anything about paving Pleasant Hill Road." This, this is something that gets recorded in the deeds office and is picked up on a title search. It doesn't, it doesn't cure anything now. It just makes it easier down the road to get it done, but it doesn't cure today.
We are still open for public comment. Anyone else care to address this application?
My name is Lonnie Wilson, and I'm the real estate broker that put these two people together, and that's my purpose for being here. I spoke to Mr. Palmer prior to the meeting, and he was on a wrecker call and was not able to be here. And anyway, that's why he's not here. The other part I can say is, on the auctions, I can answer a little bit about that, because that's my other profession. Besides real estate broker, I'm an auctioneer. I've done several of the wrecker auctions around the deal. A good wrecker yard makes their money on storage. If the person's got a car in there three weeks, four weeks, as soon as they can possibly get the permission from the state to auction that car off, they'll auction that car off, recoup their money, and put it back in their pocket, get it out of their way, and bring in another car. That's why you don't have cars sitting around for a year and a half, two years, because it's not cost-effective for them to do that. They turn the inventory as fast as they can and get it moved. That's, so don't worry about cars being there long. It's not financially feasible for them to do that. Any questions? Anybody I'd have for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion among the commission?
We've identified on page eight, five alternatives for you. And again, if there's any discomfort level about needing additional information, that's, that's what option four is, is there for. But those, those were the best five alternatives we could come up with, and any, any one of those would be appropriate actions if, if the majority of the commissioners are in favor of those.
I entertain a motion if somebody cares to so make one.
I would move that we deny application PDD 11-2 slash 2A, because I just think that it's going to increase the traffic and put more pressure on a road that is not built for that kind of traffic at this time.
Do you have a second?
I second that.
Moved and seconded to deny application PDD 11-2 dash slash 2A. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll record as an opposed.
No.
Were you an opposed to? Okay. To oppose Commissioner Ryan and myself. Okay. Motion is denied.
Is that a four to two, four to two vote?
Yes. Application number, or item number four, application CU 11-1 filed by George Stein requesting approval of a conditional use permit to allow construction of a mini warehouse in a C5 Service Commercial District on property legally described as lots 13, 14, and Lot 15, less the west seven feet thereof, in Block 1 of the Holiday Addition to the City of Salinas, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 440 South Clark Street. Dean?
Mr. Hirsch is going to have this report for you. The applicant came to planning staff in early April inquiring about the three properties listed in the little descriptions, lots 13, 14, and 15. The applicant was looking at potentially purchasing the properties and developing a couple of mini storage units that would run parallel with Clark Street. During that meeting, staff identified two major concerns. One is there was a public access or a public utility easement that ran between lots 14 and 15 that would be encroached on by the proposed mini storage units. The second concern that we identified was the fact that this is a C5 zoning district and mini storage units are only allowed under the approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. Which brings us to, I guess, a number of events that have taken place. One, the first item we addressed was the, the vacation of the utility easement shown on the overhead here. We took the item to the city commission to have the utility easement vacated. We alerted all of the local utility companies to get their input, and none of them had any utilities in them. And after several meetings, it was discussed and decided that, that easement could be vacated for the project. So on Monday, this easement was vacated, which brings us to our conditional use permit meeting today. The applicant is proposing to put the mini storage units in this location because of its proximity to a major commercial corridor over on Broadway, just a little over a block to the, to the west here, showing off the screen. The surrounding area that accompanies this property is a similar mini storage unit to the south, the big toy storage unit that houses and stores RVs and other recreational-type vehicles, a dance academy down here, and several residential units to the east side of Clark Street with the northern portion being dedicated to multi-tenant spaces and the southern portion of Clark Street being dedicated to single-family residences. The utility situation in this area is we do have water and sewer going down Clark Street here, a six-inch water line and an eight-inch sewer line. The, and there's also a private sewer line that is, has an unidentified owner running through kind of towards the western edge of, of these properties there. The applicant is not proposing to use any sewer and would not need to, as this is a non-climatized storage building, and is not proposing to put any offices or bathrooms into the complex and the facilities at this location. So we don't have any issues with, with the fire or, or the, the water or the sewer. There is fire hydrants located in close proximity, one at the intersection here at Clark and Holiday. So fire protection is in close proximity. Probably the biggest concern that staff has in reviewing the site plan is the 22-foot access aisles between the storage units. We do have a 25-foot access aisle on the north side and a 24-foot access aisle on the south that would be adequate. However, it has been the historic interpretation of both planning staff and the fire department to require 25-foot driving aisles between storage units so that a vehicle of a tenant can be parked next to a tenant's storage space and still leave adequate room for other tenants to drive down those access aisles without interfering or having to back up and go around. The site plan has adequate landscaping, both along Clark Street and Holiday. The setbacks are adequate. We have a 25-foot setback on both of those street frontages, and all of our side yard setbacks have been met as well, and we are well under our 50% maximum lot coverage. I think in looking at the, the site plan and the proposed conditional use permit, staff has identified six items if the commission does decide to approve the conditional use permit that need to be looked at in further detail, with the main item being that access aisle that was addressed, and the following items being a more detailed planting plan that to go with the landscaping areas that have been proposed, and a proposed lighting plan if the applicant does decide to have exterior lighting to make sure that we don't have any light spill onto the adjacent roadways or the residential properties on the east side of Clark. And we would also want to make sure that everything is graded appropriately on the site and that all water is directed to those street frontages, particularly Clark Street, where the inlet, there is a storm inlet here at the corner, to make sure that we aren't flooding or pushing water that wasn't typically being pushed onto the neighbors, onto the neighbors. If there are any questions of staff, we would take those at this time.
Dustin, is there any precedent for allowing something less than 25 feet? Have we done this before in the past on any other?
There, Dean may correct me if I'm wrong, but I think there is one precedent, and it's not, it wasn't a precedent that the whole development was allowed to have less than 22 square feet. It was that one aisle in a larger mini storage complex was allowed to have 22-foot distance. And I think Dean can maybe speak to that a little more historically than I can.
Yeah, I think that Dustin adequately described that, going back and looking at plans that the Planning Commission has approved. The development for Broadway Mini Storage on Centennial Road, being the most recent, it was approved with 24-foot aisles without any comment from the, the planning staff or fire department. And in our view, that, having done that, that adjusted the standard from 25 to 24, but the 24-foot dimension is the minimum dimension to have a- Yeah, I think that Dustin adequately described that, going back and looking at plans that the planning commission has approved. The development for Broadway Mini Storage on Centennial Road, being the most recent, it was approved with twenty-four-foot aisles without any comment from the, the planning staff or fire department. And in our view, that, having done that, that adjusted the standard from twenty-five to twenty-four, but the twenty-four-foot dimension is the minimum dimension to have a, a two-way driving aisle, and a parking lot is, is twenty-four feet. So, if, if you had a twenty-two-foot aisle in a parking lot with ninety-degree parking, that would not be permitted either. But the, we actually, early on, had reviewed, there was a original plan that was submitted for this project that had two buildings instead of three, and so, the, the plan with two buildings, the aisle width was not an issue. But the, because of the hundred-and-forty-five-foot dimension there and the twenty-five-foot setback off of Clark, the only place to gain, you can't shift the building, well, you can shift the building closer to Clark, but that would require a setback variance. So, what the applicant did was to move from the two buildings to three and then have that space in the middle, but the, the original plan had a much wider setback on the west with only the two buildings. But the, to any conditional use permit, I've reviewed, twenty-four feet is the smallest dimension, and we do have a development on North Ohio that has one single twenty-foot access aisle.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Just tell me if you will, Dustin, what is the current zoning of the big toy storage to the south of this that you mentioned? What's it zoned as?
It's also C5 and was brought before the planning commission for a conditional use permit. This was in two thousand and five, I believe.
So, this approval would in essence mirror what happened there?
What's that?
This, this, if we approved this, is in essence mirror what happened to that lot south there?
Yes, very much so. It's a little bit different because we're not looking at recreational vehicle storage. We're looking at more personal spaces. I think, you know, I'll let the, the applicant speak to the size of them, but they're looking at fifty spaces roughly in that area as, as the number of spaces that they'd be looking at.
But similar type closed in, in closed storage. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Could we hear from the applicant?
My name is Steel Warren Ettergur, and I'm still at six thirty-one East Crawford.
And we're still happy to see you.
Good. I think the first thing I'd like to address is the aisle width, and I have a little bit more history with that because we've had a series of discussions on different, similar kind of facilities. There, there are two different sets of criteria for that. The fire department requires a fire department, or fire access aisle of clear width of twenty feet, and that's between any obstruction. And typically, what we've looked at on buildings is the gutter and the overhang and everything, making sure that there's actually a clear twenty-foot width between the two. Because of variations in overhang and gutter and so on, that has been expanded at the, at the building line to something wider than that to make sure that there was a twenty-foot fire access aisle there. Also, planning had talked about, or, you know, the planning staff had talked about the ability to have two cars or a single car parked there and somebody to get past it. The twenty-foot aisle still allows that. One of the issues that has been raised frequently by the owners of these kinds of facilities is that the wider you make that aisle, the more likely it is that a vehicle will try and back up to the overhead door on one of the units and then effectively completely block the access aisle. If it's narrow enough that there you don't feel like they have the ability to do that, they will offload with the vehicle parked parallel to the building instead, and that preserves access up and down through the aisle. So, there's, there's a trade-off with making the aisle wider, and we've talked about what is that magic point and haven't exactly gotten it down to the feet and inches, but between twenty-five and twenty feet someplace is where most of the folks that own these think you've run into the problem of people trying to turn sideways in there. And, and again, that produces more of an obstruction than a car parked in the aisle. If that becomes an issue with this, what the effect of it is that we'll have to change the dimension of one of the buildings in order to make that work.
The, the middle building seems wider than the other two.
There, there are some magic formulas for figuring out how big the buildings ought to be based on the rentable units that go into them and the configurations of them, whether it's a long unit that goes through the full depth of the building or whether it's divided down the center, and I can't speak to how that works out financially, but that's, the preference is to work out certain modules to these buildings to get the, the size and type of unit that best fits the, what, what the demand is.
Back on the, the driving issues, I guess, is, is that, that middle building is got to be situated in some way so that people could, you know, be parking on either side of that.
That's correct. That will have a dividing wall down the center of it for most of the units within it so that you access individually units from either side of it. That, that requires a double access.
I guess my point is, say somebody was trying to access the building on the left, and they were parked on the left-hand side of that driveway, and then somebody, and then there was a door access to the building in the middle, and they were parked on the right-hand side of that driveway.
It's blocked.
Yeah.
If, if they're at the same place. And that's, and that's going to be true whether it's twenty-five feet or, or whatever it is, up to some reasonable dimension. The other thing about these to keep in mind is that while they typically rent up and all the units are full, the, the activity level is pretty low. I mean, the odds of having that scenario actually happen are extremely low. You, you may have two people in the lot at the same time, but them being across from each other and blocking the aisle is, is much less likely. Some of the other conditions that Dustin raised for landscaping, detail, lighting, drainage, those are part of building permits, middle information that we have to turn in and gets approved and reviewed by, in the case of landscaping, by the planning department. Engineering looks at drainage, building services, and planning look at the lighting for spill and so on. So, those, you can, you can list those, but we'll be dealing with them anyway.
Questions of Mr. Ettergur?
Just a quick one. If, if this plan were approved based on the staff recommendations as outlined, which included twenty-four-foot widths between the building, is that still doable for the project?
It is. It changes the formula.
I would imagine that if you had to narrow the middle building instead of having a dual use with a center divider wall, you'd have to make it consistent with the other two and have...
They have, they have various ways they can arrange that, making it a long unit that's accessed from the side versus one, one that's all the way through, and that's going to be up to the owner to decide how he wants to lay that out.
Just out of curiosity, what's the difference in the width between that middle set of buildings?
The two outside buildings are twenty feet wide. The middle building is twenty-five feet wide.
There's your four feet.
Yeah. The, the other, the other option for creating more space is to move the west building closer to the property line, but then we have an easement there, and we're also at a ten-foot distance from the property line, which is a limitation on constructing a building without a firewall, and in these types of buildings, a fire, one-hour firewall at the property line like that is much more difficult. So, that's, we're, we're setting back ten feet to avoid that criteria.
That's, we wanted to clarify, it's not a zoning requirement that it be ten feet away, but as a practical matter, it's easier to construct that way. And I guess we've discussed, and Mr. Kennedy has always expressed concern about precedent and, and things of those natures, and, and when Dustin was working on this report, he had to hear me mumbling and, and grumbling. But the, my, my point on that is that the planning commission will never hear any dimension from me except twenty-five feet, and that, that was done by interpretation, because for better or worse, the, the section was drafted without language that specified a dimension. It said that the, would be designed such that access drives have sufficient width to allow vehicles to both unload and pass. And so, that was drafted that way in the early nineteen nineties. From that point forward till two thousand and five, every mini storage complex in Salinas had twenty-five-foot aisles at a minimum, including several that came before the planning commission. That is an administrative interpretation. It is not a code. It's not something that, that has to be amended as a text amendment. But it's, it's only brought there that if, if you are persuaded and it is correct that the fire department, to get a fire truck up and down the aisles, they need twenty clear feet, and it has to be twenty, twenty clear feet up to a height of thirteen feet, six inches. But the other reason for that is that when they go into an aisle, they also have to have room to, to put out support panels for their truck, so it, it's more width than just the truck itself if they have to set those out. So, you are not precluded from approving a plan with twenty-two-foot aisles. But just as in Mr. Stein's other case on Centennial Road, the standard went from twenty-five to twenty-four feet. When the planning commission approved that with twenty-four-foot aisles, if you would approve this today as proposed, then the new standard would become twenty-two feet, and then it would also be, be then, it would behoove us to get rid of that language and to put a dimension in there that's, that's voted on and approved by the planning commission as the city commission as a, as a dimension. But for the sake of consistency and the sake of precedent, we're always going to report out that twenty-five feet was arrived at as an administrative interpretation of what sufficient width was, and so, that's, that's what we're going to report to you, but you are not precluded from approving the twenty-two-foot aisles. It's just that the next plan that comes in with twenty-two-foot aisles, that has become the standard of what sufficient width is. And there's not to say there's not reasons for that. We're simply reporting to you for the sake of consistency and precedent that when we've reported to the planning commission before, we've said that our interpretation has consistently been that that's twenty-five feet, but you are not precluded from approving this plan as it is today. But I would agree that the only way you get twenty-four-foot aisles is to narrow the width of that center building from twenty-five feet to something like twenty feet and, and have three twenty-foot buildings in there.
Warren, what is the height of the perimeter fence?
Oh, six feet.
Did, did we not, on the big toy store, that was an eight-foot fence or something? Is that, does memory serve correct there?
I don't believe that's the case. I believe it was a six-foot fence, but there was barbed wire put on it, which, the barbed wire was above the six-foot elevation, but it is a six-foot fence, but it has barbed wire on it.
No barbed wire.
The fence here that's being proposed is a black ride iron fence, from my understanding. Is that correct, Steel Warren?
Just on Clark Street, the other side would be the chain link fabric fence with, with barbed wire.
So, if you've seen the fence out on Centennial Road, which is the, the iron, that's what they're proposing on Clark Street.
Any further questions, Mr. Ettergur? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As this is a public hearing, would anyone care to comment on this application? None being seen? I entertain a motion or discussion?
I'm comfortable making a motion, and it's based on the fact that I asked Mr. Ettergur if, if twenty-four feet could work, and he said yes, and, and, but it would require some modification of the building, so I would make a motion that we approve application CU eleven dash one with the six staff recommendations as listed in our packet.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve application CU eleven dash one with the six staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard. Motion carries.
And I, I don't know, when I was out of the room, Mr. Hertz reported to you that that city commission has agreed to eliminate the easement that was in the way, voted last night to approve that.
All right, item number five. We are knocking them out here. Yes, we still have a quorum. Alyssa, would you note that Commissioner Soderig?
You want me to leave?
No. No, you have to stay. It's not a choice. Nobody else can leave. Application Z zero seven dash eighteen B filed by D.L. Rogers Corporation requesting a change in zoning district classification from R3 multifamily residential to PC3 planned shopping center district, and approval of an amended site development plan to allow the expansion of the Sonic Drive-In restaurant at site three ten South Santa Fe. Subject property is legally described as a south forty feet of lot one seventy-one on Seventh Street in the original town of Salinas, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as three oh seven South State, South Seventh Street. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The good news for you, you have a real, real long written report with lots of background in it, and you're going to get a real short oral report. So, the basic gist of this is, is that we had an original Sonic site plan and an original Sonic edition plat that basically created a one-hundred-foot wide by two-hundred-and-fifty-foot lot that went all the way through between Santa Fe and Seventh Street. And the idea was that there would be a new replacement Sonic drive-in that would replace the existing one, and it would be located to the rear of the, the property that is operating there today. What has occurred since then is an opportunity for Sonic to acquire additional property along Seventh Street from Salinas Regional Health Center to incorporate into their site plan. And, do you have my pointer? The, this is the area here, so you're looking south. This is Masonic Temple here, Seventh Street. This is the proposed relocated new Sonic, which is drive-in and drive-through. This plan was approved by the planning commission, and there's actually a building permit issued for this plan. This lot today is zoned residential. It's not commercial. It's not part of the original plan, and with this land available, they are coming to you and presenting to you their plan for how they would utilize that, and their plan is to provide additional angled parking here, improve the circulation here, and then they've been congested in terms of having a storage building and a decent place for a trash enclosure, so they would, they're proposing that here. I believe, John, is it correct that this plan depicts the dumpster at eleven feet from Seventh Street?
Yeah, the enclosure itself is eleven feet, too.
Okay, well, this is a request for a planned commercial zoning and a site plan, and within that, you have the ability to modify standards or approve deviations, and you did do that to a degree in the original plan. And so, you, you, because of the proximity to downtown and what they had to work with, you approved a reduction in front yard landscaping, a reduction in the amount of tree units, and an increase in the maximum paving coverage. The requirement for a setback for that dumpster enclosure from Seventh Street is twenty-five feet. You would have the ability, if you wish to, to approve that as proposed, our recommendation would be that it be shifted and setback to conform with a twenty-five-foot setback. So, this would have to slide back. The building would have to slide back and leave this space open. These are not required spaces, but that, it's tight here, but we think that if, if it's viewed as symbolic, then it's symbolic, but basically, this site has almost no green space or onsite landscaping. There, there would be an opportunity to have something on private property here. They're being allowed to put trees out here in the right-of-way and live their own property, so the option would be to require another tree somewhere within this right-of-way or on private property. We don't have a plan to utilize that, but our recommendation is that you carry over all the exceptions that were previously approved, that you approve the plan to incorporate this portion of the lot on Seventh Street into their plan, and... this portion of the lot on 7th Street into their plan, and that it be shifted to a 25-foot setback from 7th Street. And that some effort be made on their part to incorporate at least one additional 7th Street tree into that. So that is our recommendation, which appears on page 12 of your report. And so there are two aspects to this. One is the zoning aspect to go from R3 to Plan C3. And then the other aspect would be approving the amended site development plan that incorporates that space. That could be done in all one motion to recommend the Plan C3 zoning and approval of the amended plan. But the conditions that we're recommending are on page 12 of your report. And again, you would have the discretion to approve that in its proposed location, but we wanted to report that if this wasn't a planned district, that would need to be set back a minimum of 25 feet from 7th Street and not be in a front yard.
Any questions of staff? Would the applicant care to address the commission? Your name and address, please.
I'm Danny Powell. I live at 1302 Highland Circle here in Salina, Kansas. I represent D.L. Rogers Corporation. We don't have a problem whatsoever of moving the dumpster area back 25 feet whatsoever off of 7th Street.
It'd just be 14 feet back from where it's presently shown.
Great. Well, we try to encourage as much green space as possible and-
Yes, yes, we will try to do that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we accept the application Z 07-18B with the amended site plan and the third recommendation by the-
Are you gonna, do you want all of them, number one? Number one, two, and three with the staff recommendations? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve application Z 07-18B with the three recommended staff recommendations. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Okay. You thought we were gonna never get to this point. We are at the last item. Oh, I'm sorry. Application Z 98-8C filed by Core States Group on behalf of Murphy Oil Company requesting approval of a site development plan to allow construction of a convenience store with fuel islands in a Plan C3 district. Subject property is legally described as Lot 3, Block 1, in the replat of Auburndale addition to the city of Salinas, Saline County, Kansas, and addressed as 3015 South 9th Street. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Little did the applicant know that as the only non-public hearing item, this was going to be last on the agenda, but this is an administrative item. It's a final site plan approval. You've already dealt with the zoning aspect of this back in 2001. And back in 2001, there was a planned commercial district set up for what is known as the Auburndale addition, the primary tenant being Lowe's Home Improvement Store. And there were certain stipulations that were put in place that do affect this site, one of which there was an overall signage plan approved for Auburndale addition. And for this particular outlot, limited the property to one pole sign with a maximum permitted sign area of 120 square feet and a maximum sign height of 30 feet. And then additional wall signs are permitted based on the C3 sign regulations. So this is the overall plan for Auburndale, this being Lowe's, and this is our subject property right here. And so this is the plating arrangement. We're on Lot 3, and the access to this was set up to be internal access. So the nature of the request, and you've got a whole number of drawings that are in your packet, I'm gonna ask John just to focus on the site plan for now. But the site plan as presented, this represents a, what we would consider typically, atypically small convenience store. You're talking about a dimension of 14 feet by 43 feet. That is 591 square feet. That would be even small for a two-car garage. So it is a small convenience store. Then we've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 fuel islands covered by a canopy here. They're also going to have available for customers an ATM machine, a propane exchange, and a red box vending machine. And then the plan also shows a potential future car wash here. And again, when you have a potentially phased project like this, and everybody knows and understands that a proposed future single bay car wash is in the proposal, then that would be a consideration that if they choose to come back and do that later, they have presented that plan to you today. The original concept, the only two things that we had, three comments or concerns on, one is that they were looking at a concept to have a, more or less a V ditch or vertical ditch that would, this would be all curbed, and the runoff would come from this paved area here. And they were looking to have a V ditch that would carry it over to this inlet. And from staff perspective and the developers' perspective, that was not in keeping with the original intent of this subdivision, where there were careful considerations made to have private underground storm drainage. So they have modified their plan to collect the runoff and get it to this inlet here without creating a ditch. If you had done this ditch here, you would have basically a ditch here, here, and then one here. So that could have been viewed as a detraction for a future development of other outlots. So that has been eliminated. The other concern was that there was a plan to bring a stub and a fire hydrant, and wanted to make sure that that hydrant is in fact located within a existing utility easement. And the other concern was expressed by the city forester, and that was, had to do with the original plan for shade trees out here along 9th Street where there is existing overhead power lines, and the city forester was concerned about that in terms of growing into the wires. So, John, I don't know, they were emailed to you. Do you have the staff recommendation to put up on the screen? The recommendation that we have is that the, dealing with having a single pole sign and then facade or wall signs. Because of the smallness of their building, city staff has historically, in the case of gas dispensing facilities, counted the canopy as part of the building facade. So when you have a small convenience store like this, it's not going, 14 feet of frontage doesn't get you very far. So the canopy and its frontage would be used to determine the amount of signage allowed. That we would have a revised planning plan, and the option would be for showing lower-grown ornamental trees or relocation of the proposed shade trees to get away from the overhead power lines. We do have a site lighting plan in that, so item four has been addressed. Item five reemphasizes the need to make sure that the stub line and any fire hydrant connected to that is inside an easement, because once that's installed, it will be owned and maintained by the city of Salina. Wanted to remind the applicant that to go out and do any land disturbance out there, there would be a notice of intent obtained from Kansas Department of Health and Environment, and also a local land disturbance permit issued by the engineering department prior to any earthwork or land disturbance out there. And then the requirement that the project be completed in substantial conformance with the approved site development plan. The only other item that came up here very much in our review in our preliminary meetings was that this is a C3 zoning district, and so that would be equivalent to what Dillon Southgate and some of the locations like that have. The C3 district does not allow outdoor display or storage except for seasonal garden centers, which are seasonal. So for things like propane exchange or red box or things like that, places like Dillon Southgate have been allowed that if it's underneath their front canopy, which we consider to be part of the structure. So we asked the applicant's designers here to address that with their ATM, their propane exchange, and their red box vending machine, and to somehow get those under cover similar to what was done at the Dillon's Southgate and other C3 zone properties. So in terms of getting comments from the applicant, we would like to hear them explain to you how they're, because it's not altogether clear on the site plan at that scale where those items are, but how the ATM, the propane exchange, and the red box vending machine, where those are located and how that's being addressed. Their plan for 9th Street landscaping, what they're doing as far as the trees there and the overhead wires, and then how they've modified the drainage system to get away from the surface ditch. I think the other thing that we discussed briefly in steady session that we did not address here that is a potential item for the planning commission is that is whether you would like to require or just encourage a sidewalk connection to the bike hike path on South 9th Street so that people using that could get into this site directly. It's been brought to our attention also that, and this is probably, the fence is probably 50-some years old, but there is a chain link metal fence that's sitting out there today that the state highway commission put up to delineate the highway right-of-way. And so obviously, that'll have to be removed to do any work out here. But the items that we'd like to hear from the applicant about would be the outdoor display, the propane and red box vending machine, how they've changed the drainage and landscaping, and then any thoughts they have about connecting to the hike bike path. With that, I'd be open to any questions you have.
Dean, is it possible to make a condition that the 234-9 price that they had on the drawing, that we hold that for at least 30 days?
I don't know if that's, I think it's called a changeable copy sign, so.
We are the planning commission.
I think they put that the way to influence votes here.
Ah, I see.
You could probably make that a condition, whether it was enforceable or not would be another matter, so.
Would the applicant care to address the commission, please? And address the conditions that Dean had talked about. Your name and address, please.
My name is Brian Sartain. I'm with Core States Group. Thank you. I'm at 36 Lambeth Drive, Bellevista, Arkansas. We've been in communication with the city since mid-January about this project. I feel like, you know, we've developed a good relationship with them and been responsive to their comments. I'll go ahead and address these concerns. The outdoor vending area, we originally, in preliminary discussion, we had it outside of the building canopy as, in response to their requirement to fully enclose that or put it under a drip line of the canopy, we moved it up next to the building. In doing so, Murphy made the decision to do away with the propane and the red box. So at this time, we're only proposing one soda, one soda dispensing machine on either side of the kiosk, which is one here and one there.
I think that shows up on the elevation, John, if you wanna-
Yeah. The elevation might still show the red box. I'll have to get that revised.
I think this one, those are soda machines, at least. They look like it when I blew it up. But you're referring to on either side of the building there?
Yes, sir. One soda machine on either side of the building. And then the west side of the building will also have an ice cooler. In addition, in addition to those, we will have an ATM, which, you know, I'm not sure if that's considered outside sales, but that will be located on the interior island of the lot between the two entrance drives.
And we do have outdoor, ATM machine would not be considered outdoor sales or display. We've got C3 zone banks that have remote ATMs. So that would not be inconsistent with anything that hasn't been approved before.
The ATM location is right here between the drives. We also have an air vac machine, which is right here at this westernmost parking space behind the curb. And that's the extent of the outdoor areas.
The drainage issues?
Do you want to address how you modified the drainage?
Yes, sir. Originally, we had the entire site draining to the, to the west. Let me go ahead and back up and state what we were told from the city. For the Lowe's subdivision or Auburndale subdivision, as part of the Lowe's development, they built a storm sewer system that drains back to a subdivision detention basin. Our instructions were to divert all the water into that detention basin and avoid discharging into this ditch along Shilling Road and South 9th Street. So initially, we had a plan to show a, about a two-to-three-foot-deep ditch along the south side of that property upon city comments. It wasn't in the best interest of that subdivision, and so we revised that to show a storm sewer pipe going to uppermost existing storm sewer inlet. And so that's where we're at right now. And I am working on the drainage report right now to confirm that we're not overloading that downstream storm sewer, and right now, it looks like we're going to be fine. And so I'll be submitting that report to Mr. Johnson sometime later in the week.
What were the other items, Dean?
Other items was, John, if you could go to the landscape plan, I think on, it's slide nine. And you might want to talk about, we had the original comment from the city forester, he's concerned that shade trees along the 9th Street frontage would grow up into the wires, overhead wires along there. So we asked the designer to look at either substituting ornamental trees for the shade that wouldn't grow to that height, or relocating those in some fashion so that you avoided the conflict.
Yes, sir. Originally, these trees shown, the pattern was one maple, three red buds, one maple, three red buds. So what we've done is replace those maple trees with crab apples, and their maximum height, I believe, is 15 to 20 feet. They won't conflict with overhead utilities. And we have moved those three maples that we had proposed along South 9th to the interior of the lot. There's one, two, three.
Sidney would like that.
Sidney would like that.
I'm gonna eliminate it, Eddie.
See, he didn't even eliminate him.
That's right.
I think that, that was a summation, I think, of the items that we had identified early, earlier with the plan. I think the only question for- I think the only question for discussion, and Mr. Stack may be more familiar with that, the ditch system that there is, than how feasible or how, what kind of challenge would it be to have a physical sidewalk connection between the 10-foot hike bike path and this site? Would we have to span part of the ditch?
Yeah, it looks like we would. They could probably lengthen the culvert pipe that's under Schilling to the south, and then span over the top of that, if that would be one of the options. It's a pretty deep ditch at this time, though.
Can I ask you to clarify exactly where you would propose the sidewalk to go? Because if we're just talking about putting a sidewalk along the south side of Schilling, then you're talking about making one storm sewer crossing right here. If you're talking about providing access from this sidewalk to our site, then you've got, you've got this culvert crossing, and if you wanted along south, I'm sorry, Schilling Road, then you've got two.
I think the, it's not as much about, because the hike bike path is on the north side of Schilling, and that addresses that, but the, the idea being that if somebody was on the hike bike path along there and they wanted to pull in and use your vending machine or something like that, there isn't really any physical, they could, they could get on the access aisle farther south and, and ride and go in. The real question is, one, how feasible is it, and secondly, is it, as a matter of some precedent if, if we are developing sites along existing hike bike trails, the connectivity of that, whether that should be required or encouraged? But the thought, the thought is that you've got this hike bike path running along here, and there's no, presently no physical connection from this to walk or cycle in there, your interior site with a sidewalk, and the question is, how, how important is that, one, and is it even physically doable, given that you'd have to span that ditch to get there? So it is a pretty sizable ditch, I believe, isn't it, Dan?
Yeah, that's correct. It's...
So you'd have to have some kind of culvert or some structure to do it, so we don't, we don't wanna come up with a requirement that's not feasible or practical, but it's, we don't wanna have a plan that's developed along an existing hike bike trail without taking notice that it's there.
Do we address that, the entrance into buildings off of hike bike paths on the, on our comprehensive plan at all?
Not specifically, no, in terms of the orientation of the building. It just, the comprehensive plan encourages connectivity, and so, obviously, the trail itself is encouraging connectivity through the community, but the question is how important it is for individual site access or building access from that trail, and the challenge here is that it's not a conventional situation. You've got a ditch that runs between the hike bike path and this actual site, and it's, there is no sidewalk along the south side of, of Schilling Road, and even if you built one, it wouldn't connect to anything. So presently, if you're on a bicycle, you would come in, you'd come off that trail into the south entrance, and I think we have the overall site plan there, John. I don't know if that's number two or three, maybe two?
Yep.
Okay, so...
Sorry. Go back.
So this is our site. This is the hike bike path out here, so you could be on there and you could do this and get in there, but the only question is whether, as we look at sites along here, whether there should be connectivity now. Admittedly, there's no connectivity from Applebee's or Red Lobster or any of those places farther north, because they were developed first and the trail came later, and unfortunately, or fortunately, South Ninth has primarily a ditch system for drainage, and that, that's an obstacle that we're coming, so it wouldn't set a precedent or not a precedent as far as South Ohio or East Magnolia or other places, but we at least wanted to bring that up. It's not, it's not particularly easy to do here.
I don't see this business catering necessarily to biking or walking pedestrians, do you? It's more of a, caters to car traffic.
It caters to motorists, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's not a traditional neighborhood convenience store.
Not that later on, as it develops on farther south, some of those places may not cater more to walking type traffic, and that would change, but this one doesn't.
So we wanted to bring that up, but we wanted the applicant to get a chance to address how they had modified the drainage, how they had modified the landscaping, and how they addressed the outdoor items, and so I think those have all been explained and satisfactorily addressed. So we believe that this plan conforms with the requirements of the Auburndale planned district, and our recommendation was to approve this with those conditions identified, 1 through 8.
Except number 4.
Except for number 4, which has already been addressed.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we recommend application Z98-8C with staff recommendations 1 through 8, knowing that number 4 has already been taken care of.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And moved in second to approve application Z98-8C with the eight staff recommendations, with the exception of number 4, which has already been met. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries. Welcome to town.
Thank you everyone.
I think these folks did hear it maybe yet.
We'd still like to see that 234-9 gas price.
Yeah.
Don't think, I don't think that's gonna be in the...
First day, first day.
We haven't adjourned yet. We haven't done other matters yet.
The, as far as other matters, you will be contacted, as will others, by Alyssa looking for a common date. We're gonna search for 4 o'clock, 'cause that's what you're accustomed to for a special meeting. We, we will, again, reemphasize that particularly, and there was one meeting in April where the discussion lasted about three minutes, and you voted, part of you wanted not to take it up again till some things were met, and so we'll be looking for that, and on June 7th, we'll be talking about public use and educational facilities, and then we'll try to schedule a future steady session on the gateways and update you on what's been done there and what we've been doing in downtown, and we'll try to have a similar format while we're invite people who have a special interest in gateways to come interact with you.
Great. We are adjourned.
I noticed when, when we had a different chairman, we got out at a quarter...